Call this meeting to order, the Caledonian Township Board of Trustees. This is our meeting of Wednesday, March 5th, 2025. Item one is roll call. I will call the roll. Mr. Snoyk?
Here.
Mr. Hermanat is absent with notice. Mr. Bradshaw?
Here.
Mr. Harrison's here. Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Zoller?
Here.
Mr. Robertson?
Here.
Item two, pledge of allegiance and invocation. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please guide our work this evening. Help us to work efficiently and thoughtfully together. Help us to do good work for our friends and neighbors who sent us here. Be with those who protect us while we're here in the police and fire and the military. Give comfort to their families. We ask this all in your name. Amen. Item three, consideration of the meeting agenda. Board members haven't reviewed the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or clarifications required of the agenda?
Motion.
Motion to approve by Zoller, support by Snoyk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. We have approved the agenda. Item four is public comment. Anyone wishing to make public comment? All right. Item five, inquiry of conflict of interest. Having approved tonight's agenda, does anyone have an interest in any of these items to disclose? Seeing none. Approve the consent agenda. There are a number of items listed. Any item can be removed for discussion or questions, or we can approve them as a whole. Is there any questions or requests to remove?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support. Move by Zoller, support by Snoyk that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say no. Thank you for those approvals. Item nine A, this is a resolution to approve an easement agreement in matters related there too for Kettle Preserve. Allison, you want to walk us through this one?
Absolutely. So on our last board meeting, the township discussed this easement. Kettle Preserve is part of their site plan agreement. Agreed to put in an eight-foot pathway. It was brought to the board last meeting, however, the board asked for it to be sent back to include the pathway crossing the street, Garbo. And so they got that back to us and that new legal updated drawing is in the, with the resolution.
All right. Thank you for that explanation and introduction. Any discussion from board members? Is there a motion to approve this item?
Make a motion to approve.
Support.
Move by Zoller, support by Bradshaw to approve the item as presented. Is this a resolution?
Yes.
It is a resolution. Mr. Snoyk?
Aye.
Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes.
Harrison votes yes. Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Zoller?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Aye.
And that item has been approved. Item ten A, this is a discussion and motion to approve a 68th Street Public Water Main and Sanitary Sewer in the amount of $123,941. Again, we have a cover memo and at least from our memorandum from our engineer. Allison, what can you tell us about this one?
Absolutely. So this, the work was supposed to be completed last year, but it was, it was put on hold until this fall because of the federal funding that was awarded to construct the trail. This, however, is the street. And part of their bid process was to include providing sewer to the parcels there. This is not normally something the township covers. We usually have the people who develop the land cover the cost, but we are asking the board to consider paying for it upfront and asking the whoever purchases and develops the property to pay for it. And then what is noteworthy is Kent County Road Construction is asking us to do this because they don't want the road torn up again in 10 years from now because it will be new.
Okay. That is an understanding. Board members for discussion?
Move approval.
Support. Move by Bradshaw, support by Snoyk to approve discussion. I'll simply say I didn't have initial comfort with us paying for it. Typically, we do require developers to pay to bring extensions to their property at their cost, and then they have to wait to be reimbursed. I think that's most often the best model, but I was persuaded that not disturbing the road also has benefits, even though I believe we could require the developer to pay for those costs. I just think in the overall, this is a supportable request. All right. We do have a motion to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any post say no. That item has been approved. Ten B, this is a discussion on the issue of compensation for board members for non-statutory duties at a rate of $18 an hour. Allison, can you introduce this item, please?
Absolutely. So this past fall, our maintenance staff worker, he left the township. We did hire a paid-on-call firefighter to do maintenance for the township. However, he did take on the position as full-time firefighter. But during his time, he was not able to completely fulfill the duties of maintenance staff because he was paid on-call and working quite a few hours for the fire department. So trustees Zoller and Snoy took on the duties and have been doing the snow plowing this winter until we hired a new maintenance person. And we're requesting that they are compensated at a rate of $18 per hour. But this is not just to include compensating them for their work, but for board members doing work that is non-statutory at a rate of $18 per hour.
Okay. That is an introduction. Question as far as, I guess, specific, just using their work, at least when we didn't have a maintenance person. How is work assigned and monitored? And how is it determined what work is needed? In this, specifically, and then in general, if we agree with a policy to this?
Well, I think the board needs to determine what they believe are non-statutory duties that can be compensated. I believe that working on events as a trustee should be compensated or elections. I know generally elections are reimbursed by whatever entity is paying to have them help. But if, for example, if Dick were to work at an event, he should be compensated at $18 per hour. I just think it needs to be determined what we can compensate. I know that the main duties of Greg and Rick, while we didn't have coverage in the maintenance department, were snow removal. So I think, I don't, I, I think it's up to the board to determine what is, what we can compensate or what we should compensate.
And again, to be clear, I know they've been performing this work, so I think we probably could approach this with two. Can the work that's already been performed be compensated? And then do we want to have a policy or allowance to allow work to continue, both in the snow removal or grounds work or others? I know we have events and we've paid staff to be at events. We do have election workers. And I believe both board members and staff have taken on those additional duties. But I do believe there needs to be some controlling individual, the manager or the clerk in the sense of elections that would determine when work is performed and assure that it's, if approved, that it's not self-initiated, that I decide on a Saturday to go and work four hours at the park so that I can make some beer money. That's not a good system. So.
I think we should look at, like I know, our clerk does, the luminary spends a lot of hours on that extra along with the sock hop. I think this rate should transfer to things that's a non-statutory job that I think the clerk. So if we set this rate, things like that where you're spending much more than your statutory time, she should be compensated for that. Or they need other trustees to take care of this because we don't have volunteers. There should be compensation because it's a long day for some of them.
Is this the same amount that we pay staff to work events when needed?
Yes.
Okay. So we're basically seeing whether elected officials can be part of that supporting of community events? Okay.
This is the.
And maintenance.
This is the rate we pay people who work the events as well. And any staff who works moving forward this year is that's the rate that they get paid for working events, starting with the luminary walk.
And this was to cover when we didn't have a maintenance person. Is there still a need for additional maintenance help? Or is that covered now with our new maintenance person?
I believe that it is covered, but I think that when you only have one person working the events, like Jeff did, there may be a time where they're not available. So it would be good if there was a trustee that was open to taking on those duties. I think that's where you could cover it there. Or if, I guess, the events or in, yeah, I would say the events is where they would need it. Or if they needed help with snow removal because they were sick, the person was sick. I think there are ways that they can, they can step in. The other option too is if the board doesn't want the, doesn't want to step in to fulfill those duties, we could also look at hiring seasonal staff that just is employed in the summer to take care of events. So there are different options. However, I know that, I know that trustee Zoller has spent a lot of time cleaning the bathrooms and setting up for events before we had Nolan. So he does know how to run them and he has, he has said he's willing to be a backup if the person who was hired to do maintenance is not available.
I just have a couple of concerns from a payroll standpoint, just because that's my department too. And that just, I feel like this could get super murky. Not that I don't appreciate everything that everyone has done, but, you know, like you said, who's to say that I'm just gonna go and work four hours at the park for beer money? Or, you know, I'm gonna be at the luminary walk for eight hours. But was I really there for eight hours? I mean, who, you know, I'm not saying that none of us aren't trustworthy, but who, who's looking at that? Who's, how are we being transparent to our community? We all get a salary. And I feel like we are public servants and so we volunteer for these things. I've never been paid for luminary walk. I don't get paid for cemetery work. That's not statutory for me. I put in so many hours on that columbarium and all of that, but that's not statutory work for me. I just did it.
We actually paid you an extra $1,200 a year because of that. That's why your salary is higher than trustee Robertson's. So you did get paid.
Treasure Robertson, please.
Treasure Robertson.
Yep. Sorry.
Excuse me. That was my, but no, you are making, we did that for compensation.
Yeah, well.
That is fact.
That is fact.
Well, I guess from my part, I, I would be more generous. I, you know, we had Jeff and now we have, is it Justin? Is that his name?
Justin.
Okay. He's being paid $23, $24, $25 an hour to do work. And if Greg and Rick are doing this kind of work, why do they only get 18? I, and then as far, I, I think we need to be careful here. I, if this is a one-and-done to deal with the situation that happened over the winter, which to some extent I think was avoidable, had the job been posted earlier. But that being the case, I think we, we took advantage of their willingness to do that, but I don't see why they should make $5 an hour less. I think it's a separate issue, this event. I think Joni's concerns are well-founded. And I personally don't think it should be up to the manager to decide if these, I think elected officials have to decide what elected officials are paid. And so I think we need to be careful about that side of it. But I'm okay with the one, if we look at this past winter, I'm assuming there's an accumulation of hours that's been recorded. But I would be inclined to say if we were paying Jeff, we're paying Nolan, and then these two gentlemen step in and say, yeah, but you're only getting $5 less an hour. And they don't get that. They don't get that at all. So I would be inclined to approach it as a separate issue. And I think this event pay and how that, I think that's a separate issue that needs more thought.
So I agree with Dick as far as separating. Have we documented the hours?
Yes.
Performed so far?
Yes.
So let's, I guess, have that discussion. I, I also believe that should be compensated. So the $18 is what we pay staff when they work outside of their staff duties to support events. That's what we pay them. I think that's where that amount came from. So on the discussion of the maintenance duties performed by the trustees, I'd support any amount. How many hours are, have been documented?
They haven't been turned in to me, but I know they've been keeping track.
So they haven't been at least?
They haven't been turned in because we were asked to hold them. I'd have to, I think, a hundred range.
Hundred hours? Okay.
That's a, yes, and based on.
I think that's a high range. Because when we started, I think it was in January, I was up to thirty-two.
Two and a half, forty other weeks.
Yeah, we'll figure it out because I have every week from when we started this prepping of the equipment. Prior to that, I didn't keep track of any hours doing the maintenance. Nor did I expect it.
But if you're seeking to be compensated, we do have to have an accurate accounting of the time.
Starting in November, I have records from November. I didn't ask, I wasn't asked to bring them, or I would have brought them tonight.
Yep. Because every day that I worked, I wrote that in on the calendar and I highlighted it. And then the first two-thirds of the year, I, I put that in the document. And then I've got from there on up to current on the calendar again for 2025. But I haven't added that up yet.
And is that just plowing at the library, right? Because you didn't plow here.
Assaulted a couple times.
Chief plowed here, right?
Salted, no, nothing plowed here, salting and.
That was the sidewalks, long doberwinger. And then in front of the maintenance building, we plowed and salted. And then the walkway down to the bridge.
And the library.
And the library.
Okay.
Salting, shoveling, snowballing, whatever was required. And then even some of those hours were for the luminary. We plowed the walkways in the community greens.
Okay.
Clear for that event.
So that'd be back to December. Okay. It'd be helpful, I guess, to know the number of hours, but I guess it is what, I, I understand Dick's rationale, but I'm also.
We can bring that next, next meeting. We can have it to Allison this week.
All right. Well, let's put a pin on that for the discussion we're having and then talk about in general. Many of us show up to events, you know, just as community leaders and so on, and we do work. I've never also sought to be compensated, but I am compensated greater than my colleagues here. And so I feel it's a little easier to do that. So I guess discussion on, and we do ask staff to show up and they are compensated outside of, that's addition to what their typical expectations would be. So do we want to extend that same rate? That is what's being asked to work performed by trustees.
But then would it also include to, I mean, just trying to get a handle on it, like trustee Bradshaw going to Grand Valley Metro Council, trustee Hermanat going to parks meetings?
I think this is more for events. And I, I think, I use the luminary as one because I know there's a lot of extra hours involved. I've never been compensated for Fourth of July. There's the same three people and there's actually four now. They've done it for umpteen years. We haven't been compensated. We're not, I'm not saying we need to be. But if we set the rate and we decided, okay, that person spent too many hours, then we have a rate. That's what I'm looking at, I think would be fair. And if you spent 30 hours on luminary, I think you should have some compensation if you spent 30 hours on luminary. Now, spending a couple hours here and there is totally different than a large project.
I will not be asked to be compensated for Fourth of July.
No, neither will I.
I, I guess as far as my current comfort level is compensating for the duties that typically would have had a paid staff person to do. I think that's easy to do. I'm willing to support it at a rate suggested and supported by the majority of the board for the rearview mirror to the day. I, I don't know that, because there is unclear which events, Fourth of July versus luminary, they're both kind of the same. You put in a 12-hour day, but I put in 12 hours over the course of months, you know? But so it's the same amount of time, just on a different intensity. And I find it the $18. I understand Dick's rationale and so on, but I, for purpose of discussion, I'll make a motion that for the maintenance work performed by trustees, Snoyk and Zoller, that once their times have been submitted and verified by the manager, they be compensated $18 per hour. That is my motion.
Support.
So that's for the duties performed to this time. Discussion on that proposal? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post say no?
No.
No.
And that will be paid for those services. Do we want to continue the discussion? Or are we fine with not adopting, which thereby by default will not have a policy of paying for services going forward? Or we can continue the discussion?
I think there's too much gray area. And I agree that this work, you know, needed to be done. And I'm glad that the trustees stepped up. But I think in general, as elected officials, we do volunteer our time for the community. And with a little bit here and there that we all do, I would prefer just remains with our normal salaries.
And I, and I do think I want to at least call point of order. So we are voting on a financial matter which affects directly to our trustees. Should they be voted, should their votes be allowed on that? This was placed on, so when we did the conflict of interest inquiry, was on a general policy, it, which had implications to specific services. But the motion was specific to compensation to, to individuals. Are we comfortable that this meets the conflict of interest?
It has to be unanimous if they're going to be.
Removed from voting.
Removed from voting.
I would lean toward it's a conflict. I think it's a relatively.
It's direct financial.
Yeah, it's a relatively small dollar amount, but I think it's probably a conflict.
Which therefore would make it a two-two vote and the motion will have failed. Though it'd have to be unanimous, well, if we're gonna vote on it, we would have to vote on removal because of conflict.
Or could, I mean, we've already voted on it, but could we table it until they bring the hours and then have the motion stated as it should be voted on? Because, I mean, this is a completely different motion than what we had listed on our agenda.
Well, there's a whole paragraph that, that was prompted by their service. So we aren't surprised that we're being asked to, to make that conversation. But as the chair, I do not believe that it's clear what the outcome of the vote is, given what I perceive to be potential conflict. And I would welcome a tabling of this. We'll bring it back so we can have specifics. I, I will ask, we're still on the issue, respectfully, Dick, you raised the issue that they deserve to be compensated at a higher rate. Was that?
That was I voted no, yeah.
Understood. So Dick, wasn't that, wasn't that they shouldn't be compensated with their being undercompensated? Thank you. I, I will make a motion that we table this item. Well, I'll make a judgment that the motion failed based on those who are qualified to vote. But I would welcome this to return as a specific and focused item. And I'd even welcome it at a higher dollar amount. But I do think that you gentlemen should recuse yourself. And, and then we can have a discussion at the appropriate wage and so on. So at this point, I'm going to declare that the motion failed on a two-two. Unless there's objection from the gentleman, but we will bring it back. So at least we'll have another opportunity to visit. Is that all right? All right? It's good.
So is that a motion to table it?
No, the motion failed.
Okay. So you're just saying I'm going to table it?
The term of the year, the chair.
Okay.
The motion failed because two of the votes should not have.
Okay.
As a conflict of interest according to our policies. I should have raised that when I saw that's where the direction of it was going. So apologies, board members. All right. Ten C, a discussion to approve landscaping contract. I'm sorry, also, what do we pay our election workers?
It's broken down into different amounts. There's 15, there's 18, and there's 20.
If I was to work in an election that I wasn't on the ballot, what would I, where would I come in as?
You would probably make 15.
Okay. Just wondering what the pay scale is. Okay, thank you. Ten C is a discussion and a motion to approve landscaping contract for Caledonian Community Green Park for 2025. Ms. Nugent?
So I got, I started getting the quotes from our current landscaper, Kushterman, back in December, but per our policy, anything between $5,000 and $20,000, we have to bid out. So I, we need to solicit bids for. So I contacted four, four different landscapers and, I mean, including Kushtermans. And I got three quotes back. Lowest quote was Everett's. The other thing I asked them to add in addition to the landscaping at the community green was the rough area by the, by the maintenance building and along the trail, which Jeff used to do, and he did a good job. However, when I looked at the, how much we were spending to rent the equipment, the gas, and the trailer fees, it was $2,610 last year before labor. And I asked, when I asked the landscaping companies to give me a quote to include that, for a professional company to do it, it is $1,470. So I don't think it makes sense for us to continue to rent equipment when we can have a professional landscaper do it as part of their contract. So my recommendation is to approve Everett's landscaping contract at an amount of $16,102.07 to include the maintenance building and trail add-on. And, and to be clear too, you can see in my memo, it says weekly mowing. The weekly mowing is for the community green, but that rough area, because it is in wetlands, can only be mowed like once a month. And they are aware of that. It's just rough cutting until it can be brought out. I spoke with the engineer and he's comfortable with having a professional company do it as long as he's able to kind of meet with them and let them know how he wants it to be done. So we are within, within what Eagles has asked us to do.
All right. Discussion on this issue, board members?
The only question I have is, did we check Everett's? Anybody that uses them for reference? Because I know them for snow plowing, but I don't know them for mowing.
Well, I, I spoke with Todd on that. And Todd actually was surprised that Everett's was the lowest bid. He expected them to come a lot higher, but he said that in his experience, they do good work.
Yeah, I haven't known them to do this type of work. They've been landscaping and, but not mowing. This must, is probably a newer thing.
Yeah. And, and I, and they do do the trees at the community green. They're the ones who come and replace them when they're dead. But the feedback I got from our engineer was positive.
I know Everett's. They've been mowing grass back when I was in high school because a lot of the kids worked for them during the summer.
I haven't seen them out. That's my.
I've seen them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to recall. Is, I know Gooch's is local, is Everett's as well?
They're, they're Cutlerville.
Okay.
Eastern, eastern between 84th and 76th Street.
I'll make a motion to approve Everett's.
Support.
Move support that we take the low bid from Everett's and the recommendation of the manager for the maintenance building and the community green mowing. Discussion on the motion?
May I?
Mr. Robertson?
Offer some thoughts here. I'd like to go back actually to, to last summer. And you'll recall, this board did have some discussions with the completion of the maintenance building. It's how did we want to move forward with our maintenance program? And I think we were even at a point where we were kicking around ideas about what kind of a mower we would buy and what kind of other equipment. The comment I made at the time was that we need a plan. And, and subsequent to that time, I'm not aware of a plan. I did, was in touch with Allison a few weeks ago and she sent me a draft of a maintenance draft that she's been working on. I thought it was well-done, covered a lot of ground. But when it came to kind of the plan, it was, well, we have this option, we have this option, we have this option. As far as I know, the board never really looked at options. And the ones I'm thinking entirely mostly about are whether we bring some of this work in-house or we continue to, to send it out. And with that in mind, I, I, I just, for the curiosity of it, I compared my yard to the community green. And it's interesting that my property that I mow and maintain is almost exactly the same acreage as the community green. And so. And so I have mulch beds, more mulch than at the Community Green, I have shrubs, I have perennials, I fertilize it or have it fertilized. I mow it every week, sometimes twice a week. And so I have a sense of how many hours it takes to do the Community Green. And so I kind of factored that into my thinking and, and what I came up with, and this is just kind of a, you know, back of the napkin kind of a calculation. But, you know, even if we were paying somebody thirty dollars an hour to do that work and the amount of time I think it would take, you know, paying the cost of the fertilizer, how much the mulch would cost, all that kind of stuff. You know, I was coming up with six to eight thousand dollars cheaper a year if we did it ourselves. And you say, yeah, but you still have to buy a lawnmower, but that lawnmower is a capital investment that could last ten years, especially the little it would be used in this environment. And so I will not, you know, object to the, to approving these bids or the low bid and, and so forth. But I, I think, you know, quite honestly, we're four hundred thousand, probably four hundred fifty thousand into a maintenance department in the terms of a building. And it looks like we're gonna go another year and not try to get any kind of return on that investment. And so that is disappointing to me. And I think that we, like I said, it's a back of the napkin kind of thing. But I was quite taken by how much of a difference of cost I came up with, and that was only on the Community Green side. If you were to extend that to the next item, which would be the utility properties, you'd probably get that much savings again. And so I think that's something that this board should be looking at, the manager should be looking at. And as we look forward to next year, maybe, you know, think more in depth about what our options are as far as the maintenance plan. The other part of it, just since I'm thinking of it, would be, and I know Allison has spoken to this, but what about the trail? Not, not the trail up from Jasonville to the village, but, you know, the CK trail, the, the trail, I guess up behind the library doesn't need much. It needs to be, I think, plowed in the winter, but, but that kind of thing, how are we, how are we approaching that?
So I did talk to Kent County Road Commission and they are willing to do it at the cost of five hundred dollars a day.
Per trail or just for all the?
Just the whole day, as much as they can get done. So they believe they can do all the trails in a day. And so that would be, need to be done a couple times a summer, because it's not the same as the Community Green, it needs to just be cut back. However, I am waiting, I got that from, from our representative at Kent County, but I'm still waiting for him to provide it like officially on paper. And then I also want to connect with whoever is doing our landscaping and this being Everett's and see if they can give us a quote as well to do that.
Right, the one, just because I'm a trail person and I walk, in fact, over the winter, I was walking the Craft Trail a lot because that one was maintained. And that trail is not holding up very well, there are a lot of longitudinal cracks. And then one of the concerns I, that struck me is, is I walked at it, it appeared that the county was using one of their heavy tractors to mow that. And if you were to walk that trail as I do, is on, especially on the west side, there are these long cracks in the trail, almost as if the weight of the tractor is starting to break off the edges of that trail. So I would be concerned about that.
Is that the Paul Henry dick?
No, this is the Craft Avenue.
I believe that Kent County only went out there one time on the craft just to take a look at it. And when they were out there, Meyer is maintaining theirs, so it might be their tractor. And then on Davenport's side, they have been maintaining theirs as well with their own staff, because they called me and they said, there's already crews out here cutting this back.
It could be Davenport, but similarly, if someone put in a truck on it and it's not built to.
Well, only because, you know, when you walk, let's say, the Paul Henry Trail, which is a much older trail, that trail actually is holding up in many cases better than this relatively new trail. And I, you know, I'm not an engineer or builder or anything like that, but I'm guessing if you put a trail in on an old railroad bed, you've got a lot better, you've got a lot better foundation than if you just freshly moved dirt and put asphalt over it, so.
And I know what you're talking about. When I, when I started doing the maintenance plan, I walked every trail we have, front to back, taking pictures. And I gave the, the plan to Brian as a draft. However, I think that the board needs to decide, do they want to invest in having a maintenance staff come in and take care of it or do they want to keep it private? And my conversations as far as private, at least for right now, was the Community Green, it's kind of our jewel and that we want to keep it pristine. And in order to do that, the best way to take care of it is to have a private landscaping company do it.
I don't agree with that.
Well, that's up to the board to decide.
I don't agree with that part, I'm not saying that they don't do a good job, but I think if you had good staff, you, they could do a good job. In fact, they're personally invested in that on a day-to-day basis. So you gotta have the right people, obviously, but I wouldn't necessarily take it as gospel that private companies do a better job than staff does.
I understand, I, but I don't think that somebody who has, has the hours that Jeff previously had could do the events and the maintenance of the Community Green. I think it would be a full-time position.
Yeah, I almost feel like we need to have a parks and rec department and we need to have a full-time maintenance person who can do all of these things that we're talking. I mean, we're kind of like piecemealing everything together and I feel like we're not doing that financially efficiently.
But that's gonna be more than sixteen thousand dollars a year.
Absolutely, absolutely, but then they're going to take care of everything. You know, it's not just gonna be Community Green, they would do the other stuff, they'd do the plowing in the winter, they would do any maintenance issues we have through the year.
So that's, you know, I go back to my, my buying a slice of pizza, you know. We're overpaying if you look at what it would cost to buy an entire pizza, but we're not buying an entire pizza, we're buying one slice. And so yes, we're probably overpaying for what it would cost on a per-hour basis to take care of Community Green. But when they leave, they're done, the heater's no longer running, so it's costing sixteen thousand rather than fifty thousand dollars a year, which we'd have to pay a full-time maintenance person.
Well, I don't think it has to be a full-time maintenance person, half of our staff, half of our staff in the office is part-time. So, you know, I, I think the idea that you'd have to have a full-time person is probably.
It's not a full-time job.
It's not a full-time job.
I know how many hours it takes to, to do Community Green. Now there's, sometimes there's events, but they can schedule around there. The mowing part, I think we should look at in the future, a person, and it's gonna be a twenty or twenty-five hour person, sometimes less, sometimes maybe more, depending on seasons.
Well, and I, I think that's fine, but I also think we should consider if we do have a person that's twenty-five hours a week, bringing on somebody who is maybe just seasonal staff that can help as support. Because I know that those events, they can be every single weekend in the summer and it can be very, I mean, it's, it's hard to find somebody in Michigan to work every single weekend in the summer.
It will be hard to find somebody, but, you know, we, there might be somebody who's retired.
College kids.
But then you need a supervisor for them, that's the next problem.
All right, well, I agree with everything Dick said and still believe it's the right thing that we hire a landscaping business to take care of Community Green this season. I, I do think we can see the pieces and parts of snow plowing and trail maintenance, but it still isn't, we aren't there, we don't have that person or haven't created that position. Once it's locked in, it's another mouth to feed. I think overpaying for a slice of the pizza is a, better than locking ourselves into another staff person and equipment costs at this time. So the motion, is the motion made for Everett's? Any further discussion? Did you get the motion in?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay, all in favor of support of Everett's for the season, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed say no? Thank you for the thoughtful discussion, board members. Item ten D is to approve landscaping contract for the wastewater treatment facilities for 2025.
So again, I, I asked three companies for bids, I got bids from Tommy D's, Gooch's Associates. And I asked, when I first got the quote back from Gooch's, it was far less than Tommy D's. And I realized he probably doesn't have an accurate idea of how much work this is going to be. So I spoke with Ryan Mosley at IA and he had, he had gone through and like done GIS software to get all of it. So he, I sent those maps back to Gooch's and they came back with a quote of fifteen thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars, which is higher than Tommy D's who's been taking care of our wastewater and water facilities. And then I, I also spoke to him and just asked him, do you still recommend, do you recommend continuing with Tommy D's? Did they do a good job? And he said, they've done a great job, he's, he will be happy if they continue to do the work.
So the recommendation is to go with Tommy D's?
Was there a reason that Everett's didn't bid on this one?
Uh, I don't know, I, I don't think I, when I, when I, Everett's was the last person to give us a bid, but they, they weren't the third company I asked. I asked, I believe it was, I don't know.
Kushtermans, so the reason they didn't get what I asked?
Are we posting these things on our website? I mean, I, I think it's great to reach out individually, but just as an additional opportunity for any business?
I haven't thought about posting these, but I, I certainly can, and I'm, I'm happy to post them on social media. And I, I mean, the more people who bid, I feel like the, the better, you know, idea of getting fair prices.
There are a little bit, so.
Experience tells me that, I kind of get it, but I'm nervous about it because for years, when it was me going out there, you know, we got bids from Leaping Lizard Landscaping Company, we had, literally, that was the name of the company and others. And, and, you know, you kind of go out there bidding and then if you don't take the low bid, then you, you do get pushed back about, wait a minute, we go out and bid and then you don't take us. And, and we've had occasion, we took a low bid and we actually had to fire them halfway through the season. So I think reputation and past experience carries a lot of weight.
That is exactly what Ryan said, is they did try a company that was much cheaper, but they ended up having to let them go midway through the season because they weren't completing the work, which was what was the impetus of Ryan doing the GIS, of making sure that it was mapped out, what, what work needed to be done.
Make a motion to move forward with Tommy D's for fourteen thousand four hundred and twenty for the 2025 calendar year.
Support. Okay, the move by Bradshaw, supported by Snoye, that we approved landscaping contract for the wastewater treatment facilities for 2025 to Tommy D's Lawn Care Landscaping. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You opposed say no? Quick question, who does our cemeteries for me?
Josh Wickham.
And is this between utilities, trails, Community Green, cemeteries? Do I get the clerk angry if I suggest that we can have one company or our maintenance person? A future maintenance person, would you be comfortable with a in-house person doing cemetery care?
No.
We haven't had good luck within the past.
An internal person?
So let's just stay.
It's a lot of work.
Don't want to touch the third.
A lot of work.
Cemetery.
But if we're trying to build out a.
Right.
We've tried multiple people in the past.
All right.
It's been heading for.
Withdrawn.
And he does a beautiful job.
Item, I agree, yeah, okay. Item fourteen, public comment. Additional thank you for coming to our meetings, was that?
It's nice to have somebody attend.
It's item eleven.
I don't work out that. Okay, item twelve, board comment, Mr. Snoye?
I'm good.
Mr. Bradshaw? I'm good. I will say that at our next meeting, possibly depending on the workload, but we'll be looking at our, we tend to have a strategic plan, which is our goals and vision. So we can try to tap the loose ends on the one from last term and see which items should be carried over, which one, if we have new items we want to put on. And some, even some of the things we've discussed this evening might make our, okay, we need a, a plan, we need a person. So things that might fit into those boxes, I find that when we write them down, we tend to do better about accomplishing them. So I look forward to doing that with you either in March or April so that we can have a new plan for our, our new term. Madam Clerk?
Nothing.
Mr. Zoller?
How's that?
Mr. Robertson?
I do have actually a couple of comments. One, if I noticed in the management's report at the very end, there was a comment about people complaining about late charges on their tax bills. I was aware of several of these and I thought it might be helpful just so the board understands that as the treasurer, how I approach these. You know, they're, they're, I've been, I've been doing this for twenty years and every, every tax cycle, we get people coming late. And, and I've heard all the excuses, probably the, the most common one, let's see, what is the most common one? Oh, I would say is, I've always paid on time. I've always paid on time, you know, I, I should get a mulligan. And I'll just be honest and say I don't do mulligans, you know, I've just got six thousand parcels out there and I'm not gonna keep track of mulligans. But just so you understand it, it's that there's a summer bill and a winter bill. And the, this, if, there's a penalty of one percent per month if it's not paid on the summer bill. And then also on the winter bill, if it's not paid on the fourteenth, there's a three percent penalty. And that was put in place by this board, not this board, but the Caldonia Township Board of Trustees in nineteen eighty-three. And so it's been around a long time and that is a penalty that we as a township keep. The one percent penalty, there can be no forgiveness on that because that money accrues to the entities that are taxing. So as that money comes in, any interest that we collect on that has to be distributed to the entity. So there's no flexibility there. There, there is, I suppose, on the part of the treasurer or the township, the idea that well, on that three percent penalty, which is that if you pay between the fourteenth and the end of the month, you know, that's at the township's discretion, that's money we keep. But as a general rule, I, I have not granted exceptions. And the problem for me has always been, you know, whose excuse is good enough? You know, or it's not an excuse, an explanation, and, you know, I, and some of them seem quite valid. I, I had a gentleman in this last time and he showed me the envelope that he mailed, it's a charter township of Caldo and he was, it was postmarked in time for the payment. And, but he forgot to put the street address and the post office returned it to him like a week later. And so it seemed like a very valid excuse and I apologize, but I said, I just, you know, I just don't make those kind of exceptions. And so that's my approach and if the board wanted to change that, I suppose that's up to the board. But, but that's, that's been a rule that's been in place for, what's that, forty years or, or whatever. So that's one comment unless there's any questions on it. The other one is this, as you may recall, I missed the last meeting and I did watch the video. And one of the things I noticed that, that did disturb me is that on, on the, at that meeting, the item regarding the lease payments for the cell towers was on the agenda as correspondence. It was not new business, it was correspondence. And yet the board went ahead and took that up as business and paid, passed the motion or something. And so as a parliamentary thing, I was concerned about that. But beyond that was that the question was that, you know, if you recall, the, the lease rate went down. But the question was asked, what about the multiplier? And I don't think Allison was anticipating that, you know, we would be actually acting on that, she didn't know the answer. But the le, the multiplier went down too. And that information was not available to the board, yet the board went ahead and made a motion to approve it. And, and I, you know, consider that constructive criticism, but I think we need to be careful about, you know, if it's not on the agenda, I really don't think it's appropriate for us to, to take it up as a business item. I know we've done it from time to time, I think I've raised the issue before. I don't think the fact is what we do this once in a while is a good enough excuse. I, I think we have to be more cautious about that. And I just wanted to use, and we almost did it tonight, as a matter of fact. So I, I would encourage the board, all of us, to be more careful about, if we're gonna act on an item, I think it should show up under business. That's all.
Yeah, good, good points, thank you. You did spur a couple of things I want to report on quickly, not related or even responsive. One, we do have the village president here, we've been working with the Village of Caledonia, with the Caledonia Chamber and the Main Street Merchants, having a number of meetings, how to encourage those businesses, promote those businesses. And one of the things that came up is parking and availability of parking. And frankly, the trail is an asset, how do you leverage that asset that literally connects the trail to the school, connects it to our parks? And so one of the things we're looking at is the potential for additional trail parking there at Main Street. The village has identified land that the school has, the school has agreed to provide that land. We've had discussions about how to share the funding of that, village taxpayers or township taxpayers, nothing to present to you other than the idea is developing. But also frankly, opposition has developed and it's of those most adjacent landowners. I did have one citizen say to me, everything happens in someone's backyard, so this is indeed.
So this is indeed that case, and understandably so, whether it's a gravel pit, a housing development, or a parking lot. If it's in your backyard, you're pro, you're more acutely affected. But in a larger community sense, I do think it's an opportunity, one that I want to bring to the board to look at, is supporting this in partnership with the school and the village to provide additional trail parking there on Main Street where the trail hits, is where it's located. But also, like I said, I think it's good for cooperation, it's good for those businesses, and will be a good addition to the community if that's where we end up. And then Hundred Street in particular, the, between Kenzie and Duncan Lake, Groundhog Day, of course, when we get the big thaws, not literal groundhogs paid, but had citizens calling us concerned about the condition of that street, wanting that street to be paved. I explained that this has come around the bend a number of times regarding being paved, that it's driven, one, by, that it's not unanimously supported. There are citizens who even, as of this week, still are opposed to it when I've asked them. So not everyone wants the street paved, so the county tends to shy away from those. Two, we do put extra gravel on those streets. We grade those. We do extra dust layers compared to other communities. So we try to maintain a, a standard of, of care for these unpaved streets. And then finally, we do do traffic counts. Although it does take you to Duncan Lake, it doesn't take you through, so it's kind of a street to nowhere, so the traffic counts aren't as high as some of our other unpaved streets, and therefore wouldn't compete. And I explained to the individual that, that we don't get gas funding dollars, you know, there's, you know, the story, and therefore competes not only with other streets, but other projects and priorities within the community. So he was going to go door to door with petitions. I explained that we've received petitions in the past and that they have no legal effect other than, you know, giving us an indication of support of the signatories. But just so you know, that at least that again is percolating up, but we've seen that a number of times in the past, and I do understand, but I also understand, I've lived on a dirt road, and I, so I knew that my car was going to be dirty. And that in spring thaw, it was going to be greasy. And so it's not as if those conditions weren't present at the time that those individuals moved there. So there at least is, we haven't created a, a nuisance or a new situation. It's one that they, you know, has preexisted. So I'll leave it at that, but they claim they may be coming, and so I didn't want you to be surprised of those concerns. Sorry. Thank you for the opportunity to return to board comment.
We'll be adjourned.
Support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.